The Bad Brad Berkwood Show is all about moving humanity forward and fighting for democracy. And remember, folks, every act of kindness is a little love that we leave behind. Hey, folks, the man with the pinky ring and the New York thing, forget about it. Bad Brad Berkwood, welcome to the Bad Brad Berkwood Show on the Ringside Report Web TV Channel. Forget about it. My special guest today is an Army veteran who was endorsed by Vote Vets, an organization that you know that I'm involved with. She's running for town council in Bargersville, Indiana with the election next week. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to my show the one and only Blythe Potter. Forget about it. All right, well, first of all, Blythe, welcome to the show. Good morning to you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. I gotta ask you before we even start, is mom a fan of the actress with your first name?
Yes, Blythe Danner. So my dad, it came from a few things. They liked the name Blythe Danner. They liked her acting as an actress, but he listened to a radio show who had a daughter. The host had a daughter named Blythe, but he read a novel in college called The Blythe Stil Romance by Nathaniel Hawthorne. So that's where it really came from, but then all those other little pieces like, oh, yeah. It was either gonna be Emily or Blythe, so I'm glad he picked Blythe.
I love the name. You're the first person I met with the name, other than no one, obviously. Isn't that Gwyneth Paltrow's mom, I think?
Yes, it is. Very good. Not many people know that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I always start out like this. It's gonna be a 360 conversation about you. We're gonna cover a lot of ground. If I have anything wrong in my notes, because I always say the internet is not always correct, say, hey, Brad, it's actually this. There's no egos on this show. It's all about making you shine today, okay?
Okay, okay.
All right, so let's start at the beginning and read something and we'll talk about it on the other side. You were born and raised in Bargersville. Am I saying it right?
Well, I live in Bargersville, so my dad lived here growing, in Bargersville, growing up, but my mom lived in Franklin Township, which is...
Right.
Yeah, so kind of, yes, but I lived, my primary address was Franklin Township.
Okay, so it looks like as of 2020 census, Bargersville has a population of about 9560 and is touted as one of the best places to live in Indiana. Now Franklin Township, as you know, is much larger and they said it had a population of about 64888 on the 2020 census. Enlisted again as another best place to live in Indiana. I need to, I guess I need to move. But if you would, talk about growing up in Baltimore. Oh, we got a special guest.
Yeah, she's, she may be coming in a little bit. This is Violet. She's my surprise pandemic baby.
She's your campaign manager.
She is. She dictates about everything. So Franklin Township, growing up, was still, it was still big, but it was also still developing. Back then, the big problem was like, it was only houses and churches. But now we've got commercial things out here and the population is just, I would probably guess tripled in the last 20 years since I moved. And then Bargersville was like, growing up was more just like a farm town, like going to my dad's, we'd go under the grain bridge and there was nothing. So when my business partner was like, hey, we're, you know, I asked her if she wanted to start a business with me, she said, yes, but she's like, I'm not leaving Bargersville because it was the third fastest growing city in the state. And I was like, no way. Lo and behold, she's right. So thankfully, she knew what she was talking about. And then we moved there shortly after we opened our business.
Okay, so high school, what was the place to hang out there?
God, I didn't, I was a, I was a band nerd in high school and I danced, so like hangout stuff. We'd go to the football games, but it was with all the marching band people. Like, we really didn't do a lot of outside hanging out unless it was at someone's house. But I probably shouldn't say this out loud, like the real hangout places were always the homes being built in the subdivisions because there were a bunch of empty... Like, oh, this is so cool. So we really...
I had this vision when you were saying dancing in band, like Footloose, Kevin Bacon, you know, down the country with John Lithgow doing the whole, the whole thing. Okay. You're an Army veteran and you were backed by an organization that I'm with, Vote Vets, which I'm glad to see they endorsed you. That's why we met through Rick.
Yeah.
What I want to ask you is, what years did you serve? And talk about a few of your achievements while you were in the Army, because I know you did a lot.
We did a lot. I was a reservist, so military police unit in Bloomington, Indiana. I joined that unit because both of my younger brothers at the time were in it, so for a very small period of time, I was with my siblings. And really, as a female, just surviving a lot of the military stuff, I think, is a big accomplishment because, you know, and then in it, especially 20 some odd years ago, it wasn't like, oh, you're, this is being done because of a, because of gender. Like, and then looking back, like, oh, well, they didn't have this happen to them and they being males. So really just surviving it and managing to get to sergeant rank, E5, was, was a pretty big achievement. But when they deployed us, they only took 19, and it was from 2005 to 2006 to Baghdad. And we were, we were at Biop and the embassy kind of back and forth with General Casey. But 19 of us were, it was a very small group for personal security and nine of us were females. So being a part of that, like on a, on a macro level, is probably my biggest achievement because being a bodyguard for someone like that and being a female, like, that's pretty darn cool. So probably that.
And what years, when, I know you served, what years were you in? Or what years did you do it?
I enlisted in 2002 and it was a 10-year contract, so I was out in 2012, but again, it was reserve. I've only acted duty for, in Iraq from, I think, May of 2005 is when we left Indiana. We got back in like October of 2006. I know I should know this better, but I don't. It was warm when we left and cold when we got back.
Okay. It looks like you have a bachelor's degree in massage therapy and a master's in business administration from, how do you say it? CN, how do you say it?
Sienna Heights. Yeah, Sienna Heights University. It's in Adrian, Michigan. It was an awesome program. They took, so I went to Ball State for four years as a dance major when I first got out of high school. And they, so they took those credits, some of my military experience, and then my professional licensing. So several thousand hours with that, and they were able to let me finish my bachelor's degree with a massage therapy degree, which was really cool. And it just kind of happened onto the MBA. They were starting a brand new online MBA program the year I graduated with my bachelor's. And I was like, well, I still had some post 9/11 GI Bill money. Not really committed to an outcome, but like I was in a good groove. I really loved the teachers. I loved the curriculum. I loved what the school stood for. I'm, I don't identify as Catholic, but it was run, it's run by Catholic nuns. And they were just phenomenal, very, very liberal-minded. It was a liberal arts school. So I did that and it was an awesome program. It was a very, very good. It was all online, but it was wonderful.
And that was, I was asking, I'm glad you mentioned that about using some of your GI Bill, because we have some people on the other side of the political party that like to tell people how the military isn't a good deal, like Marjorie Taylor Greene, for example.
Yeah.
And, and you just gave an example of how it helped to pay for your education. I know that because I'm career Navy and used it when I, when I got out. Okay. You're a co-owner of, I know, I can say this, but I'm gonna mess it up. Say your town.
Bargersville Wellness. It's okay.
Because I hate saying stuff wrong. Wellness in downtown. As well, you and your husband, Michael, are the first ones, if I read this correctly, in your town to use solar power. Is that correct?
Yep, we sure are.
Talk about your business a little bit, if you would, and also talk about how the town has accepted, because I don't know if it's a blue or it's red or if it's purple, you know, I don't, I honestly, I live in northwest Indiana. It's very, it's very, 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 very Trump red. So talk about your, your company and talk about being with solar power, how you're accepting the community with that.
Well, interestingly, I'm glad you asked that because it's a, it's an odd answer. So we moved there in November of 2019. My business opened in 2019. And I was almost done with my master's degree when I, my previous job, I was told I was getting a pay cut for going back to school. Using my days off for school, how dare I? I thought they were gonna sell me that business, but when I saw the writing on the wall and realized, okay, I'm, I'm just an employee. Like, that's all that the relationship is after 14 years. I called my partner, who is my business, now business partner, Ashley. I was like, hey, I think it's time I leave. I don't think I can work for anybody else anymore. I don't really want to be a business owner, but let's do this. And that's when she said she wasn't leaving Bargersville, which was convenient because it was outside of my non-compete. It's the fastest growing town around us and most of my clients were already there in that area, so we just called Center Grove. And then that November, on a whim, kind of, this house came up for sale, literally across the street from work, so I can walk to work within two minutes. And my husband and I moved there and I had some profit from the house we sold, the house I sold to move. And instead of paying taxes on it, I was like, well, I want solar panels. We've talked about this for years. Let's just do it. Well, the town didn't have an ordinance for that yet. So I, I've been on the receiving side of town council and the zoning ordinances and different boards in Bargersville, even before I went to run for election. And I had a great experience. They accepted our business. They accepted us as outsiders, you know, because it's a small town, not being from there and opening a business and doing something different, especially as progressive as, you can tell our business is progressive just by looking at our website. I was very nervous about it, but they were so cool. And one of the women I'm actually running against, I've, I've always looked up to, she's always, we were always very cordial. Like, I was like, oh, this is awesome. Like, one day I want to run for town council and be just like Suzie. Well, one day for, then, back then was when I was 60 something maybe, but no, that changed obviously. But so the company who did our solar helped communicate with the town, but we had a lot of input with that too. They changed the ordinances so that we could do that. So we were the first home with solar. And at the time, the Bargersville Police Department was starting to transition all of their cars to Teslas. Though, and yes, and we had, before I knew I was pregnant, my graduation gift to myself was a Tesla, so we can do long road trips without gas. Should have done a sedan or an SUV when I, instead of the sedan, but you know, it is what it is. And now they've got like six or seven Teslas. So, you know, that's really been able to be integrated into part of my platform. Like, we have energy efficient cops, like, let's, let's do more as we grow. So really, the, the town and the board and the, all of them have been phenomenal. Even through the campaign process, it's been a little different, but...
So are you, are you purple, red, blue? What is your term?
We, bleeding red, historically bleeding red. Now, like 40, 50 some odd years ago, it was really liberal. I'm not sure what happened in Indianapolis. We were blue up until like 2008 and then things just started like bleeding, literally. It seems, but because of the growth, we are increasing in diversity.
Okay, good.
Not just with race, but also thinking. So we, in my opinion, which I'll find out if I'm right on Tuesday, we are more purple. I have been saying I'm a Democrat out loud was actually scarier than telling my family I was vegan. Because I, because I just know how that's gonna go over, especially the way things are now, post 2020. But by and large, with the exception of a few terrible human beings, I've been very well accepted, been very supported. Early voting as of Monday was up 96% compared to 2019. And there was a referendum on the ballot in 2019. So like, things are changing. People are very, either very happy I'm running and voting, or they're very mad and I'm voting and voting against me, which either way, people are voting. So I think we're purple. I really do.
And I, by the way, I commend you and then we're gonna segue into that about running for town council. I saw you on your thing where you even put out, look, whoever you're voting for, contact me, just so you vote. And I appreciate that. You know, that, that you're willing, willing to do that and we need more people, you know. Voting is one of our greatest rights in this country to do, whether it's, as I always say on my show, local, state, or federal. I'm glad it's good. Let's segue in. I want to ask you about, as you just said, and I said earlier, you're endorsed by Vote Vets, so I'm happy for that. Talk about your three top initiatives that you would like the people to know in your words, so it doesn't get taken out of context by someone you're running against, that you want to see for your town.
So I'll start with where it began, even though as it's evolved, it's not necessarily my top priority, but connectivity. So my daughter, I was able to walk her to daycare for the first three years of her life, which she's now in preschool, so I don't walk as much. But so they put in these new trails and some new sidewalks, but it's all geared towards new residents who either haven't moved in yet or will move in. And people who've been here and homes who've been here for 20 some odd years literally have to cross a state highway to access these trails or this brand new park. And I, like, I sent emails, I made phone calls to the current council, like, hey, we, can we do something about this? This is totally illogical planning. Like, this, whoever's building this is not using it, which we find happens often, even in the military. They make the rules, but they're not the ones affecting it or implementing it. So why are we doing it this way if it doesn't make sense? Anyway. So connectivity is my biggest thing. I want everybody, whether it be foot, bike, mobility aid, car, golf cart, to safely and logically be able to get to the public amenities that our tax dollars are paying for, or the downtown businesses, right? Like, I'm a business owner. We've got a crap load of new businesses, but if you can't get there without having to drive and hope to have a parking spot, you're out of luck. Parking is atrocious. And it's actually, parking is going to be decreased soon. Second one is government transparency. They recently changed zoning ordinances. So even if you're in a quarter mile radius of something going in, they no longer have to tell you. So unless they have to specifically have a new variance, like putting in a gas station, nobody has to know. Unless you're attending every meeting, watching every meeting, or searching for the notes and the agendas, or the minutes for the agendas, which again, I agree, everybody should be watching these. They, they YouTube live all the meetings. They save the recordings in archives. You can go in person. So there are three ways, not including reading the minutes, that you can physically see what's happening in the town. Nobody's making time for that. It's, it's not, it's not logical to listen to hours of things just to find out what they're putting in a mire on 135 and Smoky Road. That's stupid. But we have this really cool thing. I don't know if you've heard about it. It's called social media. So my thought is, more transparency in the government without having to change ordinances or laws, just make a post. Hey, guys, here's a one-minute recap. This is what just happened in the zoning meeting. You don't get a say on it. You don't get to vote on it, but there's a mire going in at Smoky Road and 135. Deal with it. So, you know, it doesn't have to be that brass, but like, just like, just let us know. Because it affects our commutes. The, the traffic is already terrible. They're not planning on it just widening the roads until 2028, which is absolutely ridiculous. And so, yeah, so government transparency. And what is my third top thing? So many things. Really just having a more diverse government. You know, I love, I love our current council. I love all the appointed positions. Most of them are over the age of 50, if not 60, and white. The average age person here is 39. I'm 41. I have a three-year-old. I've got two, oh God, I have a 20-year-old stepdaughter now. I have a teenager, another teenager stepdaughter. I, I work in the community. I'm active. So like, most of the people are like me. Yes, I'm white. I understand that. But I am a female and most people are, who are caretakers are also female. So I can identify with a lot of people who are gonna be using and directly affected by the rules and ordinances that they are making. And I just see things differently. Like, being a business owner, I physically touch people in the community with massages and facials, so I know what their complaints are. I know that they're mad about this parking or this drive or that stoplight or that Hawkeye. Like, I'm hearing it firsthand and not just waiting for it to come in an email as an elected official and then trying to sift through all that. So I just have a, I'm very fortunate to be in the position I am in. I have a very different perspective. And I might be kidding myself, but I do believe that I can help like make that purple happen. Not like making liberals more red or vice versa, but like just communicating better. Like, you don't have to agree with me. You can, you can completely hate what I stand for, but I can also care for you and we can care for our community together and also, by the way, care for the planet that we call home, that we're like actively destroying. So I'm hoping that this, if I win, will help community be actual more community and not just like bickering on the chatter groups.
Okay. Is there any Democrats on the town council? Or you'd be the only one running?
None. I did a FOIA request to see if there's ever been a Democrat on the town council. And if I'm the youngest one who would ever be elected, if I'm elected, I would have to go to the county courthouse to search all the records myself to find that out, which I do plan to do, but I'm not gonna be able to do it before the election. No Democrats. And the few, and I mean few, we're talking like fewer than 10 people who don't think I have any business being here, are so hardcore red that they don't even, I don't even think they like each other. Like, I, I don't know. I think I'm cautiously optimistic. I think I have a good shot.
Okay. Politics, as we both know, can be a very dirty business, even in a town council run. What is the top thing that opened your eyes the most with you throwing in your hat to run for town council?
Oh, boy. The people who no longer speak to me, either because I'm a known Democrat or because I'm running against them.
The D-word.
I know. Like, here's what's funny. If you think about Christianity and Jesus, he was a brown refugee and cared about women and sex workers and the poor and the sick and the elderly. Kind of like Democrats. So it's a little confusing because I'm in the Bible Belt, but everyone disagrees with me, it seems. But it's, it's been interesting. Like, one of the incumbents, I, I have a lot of respect for her and I really like her. And every time I would see her out in public, we'd get a selfie together and I would post it, but it's, I'm, I don't exist now, right now. So it's just like, oh, man.
But you know, what's sad about that, Blythe, is that this is the same thing that Trump has done, you know? When Trump came along, I mean, he wrecked families.
He did.
And after the insurrection, the people that are still with him, you know, if you were against them before and that was it for you, the insurrection was the bridge too far. But they're still with him, backing him with 91 indictments and all that. It's just, yeah. So you see, even without even...
He's like, he's modern day Hamas. I mean, if you think about it, they're like, well, they elected Hamas.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. They didn't know what was happening, I bet.
Yeah, it's insane.
And then, yeah, it's, it's been interesting. A few clients and definitely some town people like really backed off from communicating with me or whatever, but...
But you know what? You know when I look at that, to be honest with you, they were always like that, with, you know. So you know what? They did you a favor, because if you're one way and you feel the way you just said, how you described Jesus, I always say this on my show and I know people laugh at it, but I'm being serious. If Jesus were to come back right now with the MAGA cult and he said, we're gonna crucify Jesus or Donald Trump, Jesus is going 0 for 2. That's a fact.
Likely, yeah.
I do believe in God. I think it's despicable. Okay. Tell the viewers from your area who will be watching, when, where, and voting.
So early voting is happening today at Greenwood Public Library, which it might not air today, but we'll do it. No, Monday, they'll be at Greenwood Public Library.
No, I'm gonna put this up today. As soon as we get...
Oh, perfect. Okay, so it's until 3 o'clock Eastern, Greenwood Public Library, Trafalgar Public Library, White River Township, the County, Johnson County Courthouse and the John R. Drybeard Community Center in Edinburgh. Again, until 3 o'clock today. And then also on Monday, I believe Monday is 8:30 a.m. until 3:30 p.m. at those places. I might be misremembering. It might be 4:30. And then Tuesday, all of those places and then like 20 others from 6 a.m. to 6 p.m., but also the town hall. So most importantly for Bargersville, we have the town hall right in the, literally the center of our town. So you can go to the town hall from 6 a.m. to 6 p.m. on Election Day and I will be there all day long. Hopefully the weather's not terrible. Come by and see me.
Is there any, is there any special voting instructions they need to bring in? Anything special that they need to know? Anything changed? So they, they don't show up and they say you can't vote?
Definitely voter ID. If you have recent, this is just a suggestion. If you've recently updated voter registration, the thing that they mailed you, I would take that. I saw a few people had to, had to go home and get that just to, for whatever reason, the system wasn't updated. But definitely ID, no weapons. If you're wearing a shirt supporting any candidate on the ballot, you gotta cover that up. Same with hats and things. And just come ready to vote and cast your ballot and do your civic duty. It's like the easiest, freest thing you can do to make a, make a difference. So...
Okay.
I've, I've always loved Election Day. I love it a little extra this year, but like, for some reason, it's like Halloween for me. I get so jazzed, like seeing people out the door.
I gotta tell you, I don't know if you ever saw this movie, but I got this, another vision. Did you ever see Mooseport with Ray Romano and Gene Hackman? You know, it's a small town vote. He was running for the mayor. And Hackman was the ex-president. I had this vision. He's just so excited about it. It's cool. I love it.
I get, I get excited about silly things and maybe voting is silly, but I'm hoping other people are getting excited about it.
No, but we need your energy. I love it. It's infectious. Okay. Before we take a commercial break and we segue to the second half, just the fun, random questions. Is there anything else that you'd like to put out about the town council or anything else?
Um, you know, I do, with or without me on there, I do think they're evolving and I think they do listen fairly well. And I, I do think we're on a, on a grand scale, we're on a good track for growth. But I also think we're a blank slate, so we can do some really cool things. So just use your voice, whether it be via email or voting or phone calls, like if you have a concern or need something changed or see something that could function better, let them know. Even if I don't make it on the council, let me know, because I'm still gonna be fighting the fight to get the things done that I want done, win or lose. I'm not gonna be like, oh, I lost. They can, they can do whatever. No. I'm, I'm a thorn in the side when I, when I think something needs done. So let us know.
Okay. All right. On that note, we're gonna take a short commercial break. Hey, folks, this is Bad Brad Berkwood, the host of the Bad Brad Berkwood Show on the Ringside Report Web TV Channel. And I want to talk to you about sponsorship. If you're interested in being a sponsor on the Bad Brad Berkwood Show that features network guests and entertainers and people from all walks of life and business and other areas, reach out to me at ringsidereport2014@gmail.com. Again, that's ringsidereport2014@gmail.com. I'm finally in a position that I'm ready to take on sponsors. So, hey, reach out to me and let's get you on board. I want to talk to you about my book, Boxing Interviews of a Lifetime. If you watch my show, The Bad Brad Berkwood Show, you know that I love doing 360 conversations with all types of people. Well, I made my bones in boxing over a quarter of a century ago, interviewing world champion boxers, people in the sport and entertainers that love the sport of boxing, which led to my induction into the Florida Boxing Hall of Fame in June of 2021. And that's the ring that you see me wear all the time on my show. Well, if you'd like to pick up my book, Boxing Interviews of a Lifetime, go to authorhouse.com. Again, that's authorhouse.com. And if you'd like to get it personally inscribed or inscribed for somebody that you're sending to as a gift, you can reach out to me and can arrange for something as well. All right, we're now back. You ready for the fun, random questions?
Let's do it.
All right. First one out the gate. What is your favorite genre of movies?
Oh, man, that is tough. If I had to pick just one, it would probably be true crime.
Okay.
Which even though it scares me and I don't sleep well afterwards, but I, I'm a true crime junkie. I don't know if it's generational trauma or of true crime.
Okay. Is there a movie you could put in and watch it over and over again? Never gets old?
Oh, that is a good question too. The only thing that comes to mind is Sex and the City, and I know that sounds ridiculous, but I love Sex and the City, so probably that.
Favorite character on Sex and the City?
Oh, I don't know. Probably Miranda because of her attitude, but I love Samantha Jones and how free and like brave she seems. And then, of course, Carrie's witty and funny and she's a writer and I love writing, so I don't know. I'm like a comedy, I'm, I'm like a purple Sex and the City. I'm a blend of all of them.
Okay. So my favorite TV show is gonna be Sex and the City?
No. Probably my favorite TV show, which is gonna sound weird because I'm vegan, is called Alone. It's on the History Channel. There is something about it that is so intriguing. They like put 10 contestants like miles away from each other, usually in like really cold place and like, all right, whoever survives the longest wins. It's really cool. It's reality, but it's like survival too, so I think it's really neat.
Do you have a favorite musical band or when you're working out, a group that you could listen to all the time?
Oh. Geez, that's a good question too. Favorite musical band, I'd probably have to go with Beatles, because I could listen to them anytime, anywhere. It didn't really, I've never really worked out to Beatles. geez, that's a good question too. Favorite musical band, I'd probably have to go with Beatles because I could listen to them anytime, anywhere. It didn't really, I've never really worked out to Beatles. When I, when I was big into running and ran with music, it would be moves like Jagger. I don't know if I would still do that, but I love anything with a good beat because I listen to yoga music all day long at, at work for my massage therapy and stuff. So anything with a fun dance beat. I like to dance.
Cool. What is off the top of your head, the first most memorable childhood memory that pops into you?
Childhood memory. My brothers and I, um, my, it was after my parents got divorced and my mom was working. We, we would play all the time after school and usually it ended up, we kind of destroyed things. There was one time, and this was back when the cameras, you had to like develop the film. So we would try to like stage things. So we would put a rocking chair, put the foot up and the headrest back and lean it back. So it's like a catapult. And then we'd go and run and jump off of it. And we'd try to film like us jumping in the air, but landing on mattresses. So we had this huge like setup. And then, uh, on that same roll of film, my middle brother took a picture of my youngest brother on the toilet. Well, we all kind of forgot about the film. Um, and then it got developed, obviously without us knowing.
Oh, no.
My mom is like, what on earth? So that's probably playing with my brothers after school is probably my, my go-to memory.
What is your favorite noise or sound you like to hear?
I, I love like really low meditative, like eastern Indian music, like something you would imagine hearing at, um, a Buddhist temple or something, just like very repetitive, but like really relaxing.
Okay.
That.
Now flip it. Least favorite noise or sound?
Oh, my gosh. And I say, I, I'm a vegan, so I love animals. I love my dogs, but my dogs cleaning themselves. Because they will always do it within like a foot of my ears. It doesn't matter what we're doing. They have to do it like on me or around me and it drives me crazy.
Okay.
There's a lot of deep breathing happening when they do that.
I, I bet, I bet. What is, okay, vegan, so it's, it'd probably be really easy for you. Favorite food is what?
Oh, ice cream.
Okay.
Chocolate chip cookie dough, Ben and Jerry's vegan ice cream.
Okay, okay.
I love it.
What is the first job on the books or off the books you ever had?
Um, on the books was working at Steak and Shake as a hostess when I was fourteen. Off the books, um, babysitting. I used to babysit a little bit when I was younger.
All right. What is your either solo or with your husband or family, favorite vacation destination?
Probably Hawaii. Um, we went to the Big Island a few years ago with my stepdaughters. And my husband's a geologist. Oh, maybe not Hawaii, the Grand Canyon. My husband's a, again, he's a geologist. So being able to go into the Grand Canyon with someone who knows how to read the rocks and the history from it. Uh, we went, we actually ran down to the Colorado River and ran back up, um, the Angel, Bright Angel Trail. It was so cool. It was hard. It was hot. It was miserable, but, um, just thinking about what a little bit of water can do over time is, it's really cool.
Okay.
Grand Canyon for sure. South rim.
If you could meet one person of any time in history, dead or alive, any walk of life, who would you like to meet and what would you like to talk to them about?
That is really hard. Where did it go wrong with humanity? Was it the Romans or the Egyptians? Who do we blame? Um, who do we blame for where we are now? Gosh, that's an excellent question. You know, I'm just going to go back to religion. I'm going to say Jesus. I want to know, like, what's the real story? I know what the translated stories are. I know what we think. Like, tell me what really happened. Like, in your words, tell me it all. Probably, yeah.
Okay. With everything we discussed today, if you had to sum yourself up in a few thoughts as a human being, what would you say?
Um, I'm constantly learning. I am, I try to learn and evolve with every situation. Um, and I also try to be open. So, yeah, I, I like to learn, whether it be learning better ways to communicate or to better ways to parent or to work or to interact with people or to take care of myself. Um, learning.
Okay.
Like, good information, not misinformation type learning, but yeah, facts.
Okay. And final question. What is your message or hope with this show is all about humanity for humanity?
I, we've got to do better. I, I don't have an answer for how we do that. I don't have a timeline. Um, but historically, humans have not been doing a good job taking care of one another, ourselves, um, our future or our planet. So however means possible, I don't necessarily think politics is the way because I think it starts with people like you and I, um, making, making politicians and corporations change. Um, so yeah, we just, we have to do better collectively. I know I'm a part of that. I don't claim to be perfect. But whatever that looks like so that we survive and have a planet to, for our descendants to, to live on in a thousand years.
Okay.
Learn from our past.
All right. Do this. Give the viewers your social media platforms where they can find you.
Okay, um, Blythe for Bargersville on Facebook, Twitter, TikTok and Instagram, um, mostly Facebook and Instagram. And then blythepotter.com is my website.
Okay. I'm going to close with a few thoughts. I'm going to give you back the microphone to close out completely. First of all, thanks again for coming on today. I appreciate it. I'm proud of you that you're running, you, you're using your, your voice, you're doing above and beyond. You don't have to, but you are. Win or lose, okay? Of course, I'd like to see you win, but win or lose, the fact that you threw your hat in the, in the ring, you got in the ring, as, as I use analogy with boxing. You know, you, you didn't have to do that. So you're trying to move humanity forward, which is a great thing. And you're using your, your business, your, your compassion, your empathy and all, all the above. And again, thank you for your service. If I didn't say that earlier, never minimize because you were in reserves. I tell people, because I did a career, but still, I only did four years. No. You raised your hand and you took, you took an oath. Donald Trump and, and Tommy Tuberville, who's holding up promotions, didn't never serve, but now he's holding up military promotion. So I don't care if you were in the reserves or active duty, whatever. You raised your hand, you took an oath to the constitution and you upheld it. So never minimize your service. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let me know how it goes. Email me or just text me. Let me know how the race goes. I'll be rooting for you. Want to give you back the microphone, close out with anything you want.
Thank you for anyone watching this. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your platform and your voice. I am, I think that's been the coolest thing about this experience. Um, it's definitely almost a full-time job, even though you're not paid. But I've met some amazing people and surprisingly, I am a little more optimistic about where our, where our species is going. So if I, I appreciate your time and giving me, giving me another opportunity to use, use my voice.
All right. Well, like I said, good luck to you and let me know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care.